The one that's on Buckman Buckout, the one that's off Purchase Street. Carrie on building that's thirty years old and it's in the land. Who would we get these?
We have a harness that goes around ours because she pulls, Carrie can't walk her because she's so strong. Otherwise she's like.
And it was in the, it's here.
Sure for my audience tonight.
Yeah.
And a dog.
It's a new one.
Oh, all right. I didn't know that. Where are the existing houses on that? That's, I got the correct one, right? Repurchased lane? No, 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 no. I didn't mean that one. No, I'm sorry. I went to a little bit down. No, no, no. I meant. No, 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 no. There's a real old one.
It's on this, it's on this agenda?
It's on, uh.
But I really want to put the dog.
Summer Hill? Like you have to check their lane?
Yeah, Kempner Lane. Yeah, we can maybe ask for an existing conditions going to good work.
I'm sure there is one, to be honest with you. Well, if you weren't investigating.
Oh, yeah, it says service. That guy's buying, he's a retail builder.
Yeah.
Like retail plasters, shopping stores.
Oh. I thought you said.
So then he must have.
I've seen him over here.
Really?
Yeah, yeah.
He's just kind of just been on the investor.
I guess it is. But I think it's something that you'd hear.
In these days, you can actually talk out the exterior.
Oh, yeah. I think so. I think he's, yeah. No.
It's a difficult profession to maintain.
No, noni.
So he's always kind of associated with that.
I don't know. We have four. Yeah. That's enough, as long as, uh.
He doesn't show. Sneaking in the back door.
Safe.
I think you're next to.
You're over here.
You got moved up.
You got moved up.
Jesus Christ, my arm's ready to like fall off.
I'm carrying that stuff, I know.
He starts. Like kind of afraid of this one.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Such as like. Let's not do that.
Out of all things? Not doing a good job.
Or, yeah. Potentially.
Adjourned. Yeah, I was adjourned.
That's usually how it comes back, actually.
Guy just basically is off.
It's paid for each one? I, uh.
Hello, Kimberly.
Most important person here.
Uh huh.
And he's showing that the panels on the floor, the wires hanging out.
Andrew?
No.
Even I used to be at the last one.
My thing was there.
No, it's fine.
She's somebody else.
Yeah, maybe some. Don't know. I don't think different. But announce that right up on Ballers. Now it's Bill Moore.
Fill you up. Are we good, Bill?
No, 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 no. Not at all. Not at all.
Thank you. Okay. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the June 2022 Planning Board Meeting. Please rise to our Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and eternal.
A couple of announcements before we start. Please welcome our newest Planning Board member, David Gelfarb, to the board, since tonight is his first meeting. We have some changes to the agenda. The Biltmore Estates at Polly Park subdivision is adjourned for tonight. And item number 10, three purchase lane, will be item number one on the, on the regular agenda. So in the committee reports, we have to adopt minutes from May 3rd, May 11th, and May 24th. Anybody have comments on the minutes or any amendments?
No.
If not, please, motion to accept.
Make a motion.
Second.
I'll second.
You pick, Row. All who's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Eleven Boxwood Lane Residence, a wetland permit for a one-year wetland extension. Is there anybody here on that pet or?
Hi, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Board. David Mooney here with the owner of Eleven Boxwood Lane. We're requesting a one-year extension to the wetland permit. They closed on the property in January, and we just received our disconnect letter from Con Edison three days ago to start the demolition. So we're getting ready to start, but we need another year.
We like to blame Con Ed on things.
We do or we don't. Okay. In that case, any board members comment, questions?
No.
Okay. Motion to, to.
One year.
Do a one-year permit extension for Eleven Boxwood Lane? I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All who's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Number one is three purchase lane.
Good evening, Chair, members of the Planning Board. Pleasure to be back. Welcome aboard the SS Planning Board.
Thank you.
My name is Andrew Spats, again attorney for the applicant, the Witten Halls, who are present to my right, your left. And the last time we were here on May 11th, several questions were posed, and I'm hoping that you had a chance to review specifically both the lots, what it would look like if they were built to the fullest ability or legal ability. Also, we examined the various flood events, which included the 115, 200-year flood events. But I think what's most telling is also what it, the aesthetics, what it would appear with the maximum amount of coverage legally permitted on a three-lot subdivision, as well as the maximum amount of coverage legally permitted if it was only a two subdivision. So we're hoping that this not only answers some of the questions that the Planning Board had, but I know some individuals expressed those concerns in the public. And we will be happy to walk you through it if you have any questions about the.
Please, just.
Sure.
For the, for the new board member. Please.
As the stuff at our last board meeting, we did prepare the two requested alternatives.
Dan, just state your name.
Sorry, Dan Collins, Hudson Engineering. The first of the two alternatives was a two-lot subdivision with both homes built to maximum lot coverage. Again, I should note that.
So those are the ones in black?
Yeah, those are the ones in black. So it should note that the lot coverage as defined by the town code applies only to the proposed building area, does not include actual impervious area. So when we see lot coverage, it's really just, it's really building coverage. So for each lot to be subdivided, it would be 1.65 acres a lot about between the two, with Lot 1 having a residential, residence with a footprint of 10,714 square foot, square feet, and Lot 2 having a footprint of 10,791 square feet. As you can see, you can see the blue outlines that I put on there of the, that's the layout that we're actually proposing. That's the proximization of the buildings that we're proposing, a much, much smaller area. Just as a reference, our current design proposes approximately 12,406 square feet of building coverage total for all three lots, which is almost one of those buildings. The second alternative. Goes for the three lots built out to maximum capacity. As with the first alternative, each lot includes a home that's built out to the maximum lot coverage. Lot 1 has a potential for a residence of 6,926 square feet. Lot 2 has a potential for a residence with a square foot, this is a footprint of 6,963 square feet, and Lot 3 having the potential for a residence of 7,617 square feet. Again, the proposed layout is in the background that I've highlighted in blue for this, for this, this even. So basically you can see how much smaller each.
The black is again the, the maximum.
Again, the, the maximum. Again, each alternative would provide residents that would be very imposing on the existing neighborhood as opposed to what we are proposing. Additionally, this would be a much more, much larger area of disturbance, potentially removing more trees. This would also most likely, right now we have a, there's about an 80-footed footed area that we want disturbed to the back. This would definitely go into that area if we had to remove a lot more trees. There are considerably sized trees back there that we are currently protecting as part of this. Again, we did receive the letters from the neighbors and as well as the memo from one of the neighbors, I guess they hired an engineer, Martha Monserat, P.E., which we will provide a response letter for that for the next meeting. But I do have some responses, if you want me to go through a couple, the first being that we did end up resizing all the stormwater as.
If I can, if, do you have any questions, before we move to the stormwater, do you have any questions about the ma, the maximum ratio?
We asked you to do.
Great, just want to make. You get math paper back. I mean, this room is now filled with lawyers, so don't worry.
Stormwater wise, each system was, a couple more units were added to the infiltration basins on Lot 1 and Lot 3. They are both sized now for, to store 100% of the 200-year storm, the volume of the 200-year storm, which is a 10.71-inch storm event over 24 hours. The center lot, I understand there was some concern about the, what we have is a biofiltration basin with additional storage. That's also been sized to treat the water quality volume as well as hold back the storm events up to the 200. With the removal of the existing residents, off the bat, there would be a decrease in impervious area. So if, once that's removed, if each individual lot is constructed, no matter what order, there would be a decrease in flows and volumes coming from the property. What, the residents? There, yeah, right there, there's no existing, there's no existing stormwater improvements on the site. So with everything combined, we are reducing the flows and the volumes from the site. This would be, although it doesn't look like it, I know we're increasing impervious area, we are taking that volume offline and then that, and turn that area offline that used to flow over land onto Purchase Lane, now it's being put back into the ground and, put it back into the groundwater recharge volume. To the overall subdivision. So with that being said, I'll turn it back to.
Okay. So, so we have some comments from the other engineer that I think need to be addressed. And then you do have some that you got tonight from the town engineer.
We did, in fact.
About the roadway that need to be addressed.
It's my understanding that this evening we are in receipt of a report from Mr. Modio. We will, obviously we want the opportunity to further expand on these concerns, and our client would obviously wanted to weigh in on this. So if I may, Chair, members of Planning Board, unless my colleague has anything else to add, and unless we have any questions from the board, I would ask that this matter move forward to a point where we can open up to public comment, at which point, in addition to that, we would be in a position to not only address the issues that were raised by Mr. Modio, but the other engineer who was retained by the neighbors. But we would love to be able to move this process along to, to open.
Sure. I think we can move to a public hearing, assuming that you answer Mike's questions.
Absolutely. We plan on doing that.
For next month? Yeah, subject to. So, Row, we have a date? July 26th.
Okay, okay, I just want to, here, here. So July, we know the date that we have to have the materials by. Okay, all right. July 26th, 2022, okay. Wonderful.
Okay.
Again. Please.
Motion to set the public hearing for July 26th. Come on, David.
I'll second.
Okay.
Congratulations.
Any post? July 26th, we'll see you back then.
Thanks so much. Again, I appreciate the courtesy this evening. I'm gonna go hit more.
Good luck.
Hit more doors, get more votes. I have two more hours left, so, thank you.
Bye-bye. Original item number one, the Yow subdivision is adjourned. We need to open and close, so let's make a motion to reopen the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All who's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn the public hearing. Mr. Gelfarb? Second? No, he said yes. Second? Jeff, second? All who's in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Summer Hill Kepner subdivision, this is a public hearing. So a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All who's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Gordon?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Eric Gordon with Keenan Bean on behalf of the applicant, Summer Hill Realty. I'm here tonight with Zach Pearson from Insight Engineering. You received a letter from Mr. Pearson setting forth the, you know, the, the nature of the application. I believe we had started the public hearing in May 3rd, and it was adjourned to address some issues regarding improvements to the, the road. This is a three-lot subdivision. I'll let Mr. Pearson explain exactly what is being proposed, but there are two existing homes on two existing lots, and we're creating a third lot that is not being, going to be developed. That's the, the sort of, the nuance of this application. We have discussed the matter with Mr. Cleary, Mr. Heaslip, the town engineer, town building inspector, town fire inspector, who all had concerns about the, you know, the road getting built if that third lot is, is ever developed, even though there is no plan to develop it. So what we've come up with is Mr., or what we've developed is Mr., on the plat, there are a number of notes regarding development of that road. But at the request of the various town officials, we're also going to propose a declaration of covenants, which will put any future owners of that third lot on notice that this road has to be improved with the, according to the level of improvements that the fire chief and everybody else is asking for, if that third lot were ever to be sold and developed. Obviously, my client is on notice of that right now. So the other thing we're asking for, just to advise the board, is under the town subdivision code, there's a requirement of a performance bond and a maintenance bond, since really the only thing, the only improvement that is going to be done, as Mr. Pearson will explain, is a turnaround to provide places for the fire trucks to turn around on Kepner Lane, which is, you know, we're going to improve that right now, which is a benefit to the town and to the fire department. Other than that, there's really no public improvements that are going to be made, need to be made. So we're asking that the performance bond and maintenance bond requirements be waived. As tonight's the public hearing, if we get through the public hearing, we're asking, you know, that the board close the public hearing, issue a negative declaration under SECRA, and asking for an approval of the subdivision tonight. So I'll let Mr. Pearson explain the, the nature of the subdivision.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. Zach Pearson with Insight Engineering. As Eric has stated, currently there's two existing dwellings, one located here, I believe that's 14, 12 Kepner, and this is 16 Kepner. Currently, this is on about a three-acre parcel, and this, this house goes with the balance of the property, which is almost 46. So the applicant's looking to do a three-lot subdivision where we create a 3.87-acre lot, a seven-acre lot to go with this house for sale, and then this was the lot that Eric was referencing that we're not really intending to construct at this time. So we provided the notes relative to the improvements that were discussed with town engineers, well, it's building inspector, site plans, you know, this is Lot 1 and 2. So as Eric referenced, it's really just a lot line shift between these two lots. We are creating a new driveway for proposed Lot 2, and this is the fire turnaround that we discussed. You know, right now at the end of Kepner, there's a, almost a 90-degree bend to get to this house, so the applicant's gonna try to construct that. And then we did go through and show the improvements that we proposed at Kepner Lane. Should Lot 3 ever be developed, those include a fire service line all the way in from Purchase Street, pull-off spaced appropriately in accordance with the state fire code, along with, you know, hydrant stations in all of Kepner. Should, should this third lot ever be constructed again, there's no intent to construct that.
So if you have any questions, otherwise.
Does anybody on the board have any questions or comments? Anybody here from the public wishes to speak on this application? Hearing none? Have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
All who's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we can grant conditional approval here, assuming that you get whatever the law department needs signed off for your, whatever you called it, for the road that, that would be built if the third lot ever gets developed.
So there would be the covenant on the property that links it to the road improvements, as Zach described to you. Mr. Gordon requested a waiver of the bond. The small improvement to the end of the turnaround may be a bondable improvement, so that minor improvement may require a bond.
Okay. So, so we can, I think we can move it.
Subject to.
Subject to those conditions.
Thank you.
Okay. Somebody make a motion to that effect, please?
Two, two actions, a neg deck, and then.
Sorry about that. Your notes don't say that, Mr. Cleary.
I didn't think you'd get this.
I said.
Okay, so a motion for a negative declaration, please?
I'll move.
Second?
I'll second.
All who's in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And then a motion to approve the, the project conditionally, subject to the bonding and the legal covenants for the roadway in case the third lot ever gets built.
I'll move.
Second? All who's in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, ever. Appreciate it.
Okay, Morgan Stanley Parking Garage Solar Carports is also adjourned, but we need to open the public hearing, or reopen the public hearing? Motion to reopen the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
All who's in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
One, two. All who's in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Purchase Country Market, new front entry.
Evening, Mr. Chairman.
Hello.
Members of the Planning Board. For the record, my name is James Ryan with JMC, representing the applicant. Mr. Chairman, this is a, I believe, fairly simple matter. There was a construction of a new walkway. There's actually two steps going up to the building, and we submitted pictures of that. And they put it out, put it in without proper permitting, so they were processing a number of other issues with the building department, but we were advised that it would, I think, be proper to come back before this board for an amended site plan to put that in. Since the time that that was built and in discussion with Mr. Cleary and the building department, they actually removed those steps pending your board's authorization to put them in. I know it requires a public hearing as an amended site plan, so that's what we're here for. The steps are essentially for a better, more efficient access to the building. There are three sets of steps. The one on the left goes to an upstairs area. The one on the far right actually goes into the building, but the way that they have their coolers and so on, too, it's kind of a disrupted flow, so they wanted a better flow to those two. So, so that essentially is the application. I do have pictures if you need those. I don't know if everybody's familiar with that.
We've seen them before, but if anybody wants to see them.
You want to see them?
No, I don't need to. Okay. So we need a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
All who's in favor?
Aye.
Anybody on the board have any comments or questions? Anyone here from the public wishes to speak on this? Sure?
Hello, members of the board and Mr. Chairman. My name is Danny Elgemol. I just graduated from Harrison High School, class 2022, former class president, so hello. I would like to speak, just kind of reiterating some parts that Mr. Ryan spoke about. My grandfather originally was the owner of this, I guess, establishment, the deli, the market, and it, there was a mix of him and another partner that came in and kind of managed the site, or the location. And there was a big conflict with the next-door neighbor, who seemed almost to go out of their way to get us shut down, or get us to leave. My father isn't exactly a part of this, this actual project or store, but my, there was many altercations between, or actually one specifically, where the next-door neighbor was screaming and calling my father almost every name under the sun. And I really just want to emphasize the idea that I, well, I appreciate, hopefully, the going forward of the need for the staircase. It's of extreme inconvenience for there to be one door, especially in this time and era, due to COVID circumstances and the fact that just getting in and out of the place, there should be one door getting in, one door getting out, as well as bringing in deliveries, moving in, you know, moving out broken or damaged equipment, as well as the fact that the deli has been closed for over seven months, which seems a little absurd to me, due to the fact that, as I said, I was a former high school student at Harrison High School, and there's many kids, whether they're at the high school, or the Purchase College, or PepsiCo, where there's nowhere within a two-and-a-half-mile radius to go grab a snack or a drink and purchase. Being a Purchase resident, I could see the impact that it has of that not being open. So I kind of just wanted to speak on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this application? So Jim, a couple of things, right? Somewhere in this, we want to verify that there's no further zoning or building codes on the property anywhere, violations anywhere on the property?
So we are at the very last phase of getting, I think there's one more sign-off we need from the fire authorities. Our client was at the building department this morning to verify that, so they're just waiting for inspections. All the work has been done to rectify the situation. I had to do with the upstairs, there was a creation of habitable space, living space up there, too. That has all been removed and verified. So they're just waiting for the last inspection, but all the other work has been done here.
Okay.
For the best of my knowledge.
On the, on the rest of the property as well?
That's correct. That's correct.
And, and then the other piece of it is that, that you're limited by two tables with four chairs, right? So that it's, so then it doesn't.
Yes.
Become a restaurant?
That's been, that's been made crystal clear to the owner of the property.
So that'll be part of the resolution?
Yes.
As we go forward?
And I would just point out, too, that there's no new impervious area. This area was impervious before, and there was steps in there, too, so.
Okay.
It's my understanding that violations have been corrected, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Okay, motion to close?
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
All who's in favor?
Aye.
Motion to grant site plan approval?
I'll move.
Second?
I'll second.
All who's in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good luck. Good luck.
Good luck.
Forty Buckout Road. Trying to say we're too efficient? Going once? Okay.
Chuck.
No, we're not going to hear it if the applicant's not here, so if you want to just hang out and wait until, hopefully, they come. What's next, 111 or, no, 111 is off, I'm sorry. 47 Holstead Avenue.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Mr. Gelfarb, welcome. This is a adjourned...
Just for the record, identify yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry. Albert Puro, I'm the attorney for the applicant, which is the Holstead Group Inc., which are the owners of 4749 Holstead Avenue. Just by the way of background for the new member, we commenced this application about a year ago, went through a process where there was a necessity to make an amendment to the NB zoning district, which was reviewed with the town planner, myself, and the building inspector. That application went to the town board. Simultaneously, we filed with this board an application for site plan and special exception use permit to convert the property at 4749 Holstead Avenue from office building to a residential building because of the economic decline in the office market and other associated problems. We had filed an application for environmental authorization under SEQA at the same time. The planning, the town board received the petition to change the zone, which is part of the process, referred it to the planning board. Planning board reviewed it unanimously, recommended to the town board that the zoning revision, the text amendment, be adopted. The town board then set up a public hearing. The public hearing opened and concluded on June 16th of this, this month, at which time the town board unanimously approved the text amendment. That text amendment would authorize in the NB zoning district, in which this property is located, a multiple, multiple family dwelling, which would not exceed 40 feet or three stories in height. Accordingly, now that we're back to the public hearing, that the planning board had simultaneously commenced, the, when the planning board opened the public hearing, they adopted a negative declaration, which of course allowed the town board to vote and to proceed, since the planning board was lead agency. Mark Mustacato did a presentation during the course of this process, the last several meetings, and we're back here tonight with the town board having adopted this resolution for the possibility, if the planning board so elects, to approve both the site plan and the special exception use permit. The site plan approval would be final. The special exception use permit under our town code would be referred to the town board, who retains final approval authority under special exception use permits in the town of Harrison. Having said that, I thought that if you would like, Mr. Gelfarb, I can have our architect, Mark Mustacato, give you a very fast overview of the project.
So I'll take you through the site plan. This, you can see is the footprint of the building. So the footprint of the building is unchanged. Drive way along the side road will remain, and that is a parking space here, and trash enclosure there. So there's a walkway that will provide access to the rear yard area. That rear yard area right now is part of the parking, parking, parking level, which that parking level is removed, becomes open space for the tenants in the rear, and part of the apartment building on the first floor. The parking under the building, which is accessed in this area here, will remain. Let me see here. So this is the existing front elevation of the building. This is the proposed front, again, with complete new penetration, and the third level that is proposed, as well as rooftop tech, and plantings up on the roof as well, left side. And I'll also show you the video of the rear elevation and right side elevation. So at the basement level, again, there's the existing parking area, which will remain, access from this driveway. The basement area will consist of a meter room, which exists now, a new elevator and the elevator machine room, a community room that will be for the tenants to use for gathering or whatever uses they want, a small gym area for the tenants, and a storage area for each. First floor, the existing entrance in front of the building will remain, as well as the side entrance, and both staircases will remain, adding an elevator and access to the rear of the yard. And then you can see the layout of the apartments there. Second floor is essentially the same layout, with obviously the differences of the fact of not having entrances. This is the proposed third floor, where again we have the elevator and the staircases for access. And then we also have a rooftop, rooftop level that will be accessed by the elevator and staircases, with a space for usable open space seating and entertaining area for the tenants, as well as area for the condensers that will be part of the heating and cooling for the units. Each has their own unit, and plantings.
So Mark, while you're on the roof, can we just take a second to talk about some of those things? Since it's up higher, and there are some residences that are relatively close, they're not, you know, any closer than the existing building, but you have, but now you have utilities and lights and stuff on the roof, so can you talk a little bit about noise and how you're screening some of that? If you want to do it when you do the video, that's fine. Okay, all right, okay.
So this is a video of the building, again, this is the front of the building. Just going to stop going around and I can stop. And you can see somewhat, there are plantings up on the top of the building that completely surround all the condensers, which will screen them and help to ameliorate any potential noise at that level. Again, as we come around, you can see this is the Knights of Columbus building in the foreground. And then this is the rear of the building, and you can see here somewhat, the distance, you know, we're quite a distance away from any other residences that are behind it. So I think that would be, and we're not really proposing any uplighting that will, you know, shed light to other properties. Again, this is the patio level that is now parking, and access to parking within the building, that will be converted to recreation space for the tenants. And you can see the lower level parking, which remains. This is the driveway area that, again, the driveway walkway exists now, and they will remain. Side entrance of the building. And then just sort of go up, take a look at the rooftop level, so I'll stop that. So again, you can see how these condensers are ringed with plantings, which will screen them and, again, help with sound. And you can kind of see, you superimpose the footprint of the buildings that are adjacent to it at the rear of the building. And then you have this central area, which is the elevator access and the staircases access. In the front of the building, so the third floor, yes, the third floor is set back from the facade, the facade of the...
I would also just point out that under the zoning code, it's not going to be that significant, really. Under the, under the zoning code, we won't be requiring any variances. We're meeting all of the requirements in the NB zoning district as it applies to this property. The height of the building will be about 38 and a half feet, which will meet the 40-foot requirement. It'll be three, it'll be three stories. There are other requirements in this zone, 1.5 parking spaces per unit, and that's 30 spaces. They're all on-site, so there's no impact in terms of parking. We have done a school district impact analysis, which shows, I believe, that there's only going to be three additional school-aged children generated from the site. And we meet all of the open, open areas that are required. Mark, want to talk a little bit about what we've done on the roof as other elements of, of the project in terms of retaining some of the stormwater?
Well, I can't get too detailed about that because that is, it's not a rather designed lot being here, but, you know, there is a plain core stormwater retention from the, from the roof. That would be, a part of that would be used to irrigate the entrance. And what it does is delays any runoff from the roof, and the impervious surface doesn't change what's there now. What it'll do is delay runoff and put in the storm system, so that you don't have that heat flows and you have...
Mr. Chairman, if, if there are any questions or you want to, I know how the public...
So let's reopen, reopen, motion to reopen the public hearing?
I'll move.
I'll second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody on the Board? Any questions?
I have a question. Why would you say there's only going to be three kids in a, in a building of, you know, roughly 30 apartments? What is the age range that these are going to be marketed to?
Well, because, because a lot of these units are two-bedroom, and they're really designed for empty nesters. That's the school district impact report that was done on the project. I don't have it with me, unfortunately. It's part of the file, but...
It's in the file, right?
Okay. Love to see it. Okay.
There are 20 kids.
What's that?
There's 20 units.
Yeah.
Okay.
Did I say 30?
I'm sorry, I can't...
That's, I understand, I, I understand.
Anybody else on the Board? Any questions? So, you know, I'm going to ask you about affordable units.
I don't think that, I don't think that the, that is something that the client wants to do, and it wasn't brought up by the town board. The last time that that issue was brought up, it was brought up by a board member at the town board on a different application, the one that we did on Purdy Street. And the town board, majority on the town board indicated that on a project that small, they didn't think that it was appropriate.
Well, Purdy's not 20 units, it's 14.
Forget how many units.
14.
14 on that project. But we really would not want to change the, the market pricing in the building or the mix of the units.
Yeah, I get that, but, you know, it's an expensive place to live in Harrison, and there are people that have a hard time afford living here that we need, that...
Mr. Chairman, I don't disagree with you. You know, I went back to the client and spoke to him about it, and he indicated to me that he realized that the chairman had, had raised the question, and he asked that I, in as gentle a fashion as I could, indicate that he really didn't want to do it.
I'm trying to indicate in as gentle a fashion as I can.
You sound like Chip on the application.
Now we're going to have an impasse here in a second.
I, I can only indicate what I was...
Yeah, no, I got it. You're, you're the client's representative. I mean, we have things to...
I mean, there's different...
There's a lot of development going on downtown?
Development in municipality, and one of the things that, I don't, I don't know whether it's an appropriate answer or not, frankly, but an observation, is that with a project as big as Avalon, for example, or projects along those magnitude, it's rather easy to absorb in some part of a building, affordable housing units. In a project like this, where it's, in my opinion, a relatively small project, in three stories, I think it does affect the marketing of the, of the rest of the project. And in view of the fact that this building has been empty for three years, and he's been paying taxes, and, you know, losing 150, 175,000 a year, I, I don't think this is a good candidate to build in lesser price units, lesser payment in rental units. My opinion.
I get it. We respectfully disagree on that one, you know, and, and...
I hope you understand.
I do, I do.
Respectfully.
I do.
I'm not so stupid as to challenge the chair on the issue.
No, no, I'm not taking it as a challenge. You know, we took about 5%. We're talking about, you know, one unit. It's not units. So, anyway, are there members of the public here who wish to speak on this application? Okay, hearing none.
Mark, can you clarify, is the railing opaque?
It's gray.
Up on the, up on the roof?
Up on the roof, it's supposed to be a gray.
So that's the one issue, again, the concern about evening activity on the roof that could be visible from the neighbors if that were an opaque railing, at least in the rear. Is that something you could consider?
Sure.
Sure. Anybody else?
No.
Okay, we have a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved. I'll second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now comes the rub, right?
We'd love to have a unanimous approval, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, well. Okay, so site plan and special exception?
Yes.
Okay.
The neg deck was already adopted.
Yeah. So motion for site plan approval?
I'll move.
Second?
I'll second.
All's in favor?
Aye. Aye.
I'm going to be a no.
Okay.
Special exception use? Motion?
I'll move.
Have a second?
I'll second.
All's in favor? Anybody opposed? Me. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the Board, thank you, and Pat, thank you and the planning department for the help with the zoning text amendment. Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Good luck, Mr. Gelfarb.
Thank you, Mr. Cleary.
Forty Buckout is here now. Okay. Come on down. And just...
We're going back to Forty Buckout, aren't we?
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry.
And Chuck, just for the record, there were people here that wanted to speak on the application, and because they left because you weren't here, we're going to hold this open until next month. Okay.
So, so that being the case, Mr. Chairman, and this being a public hearing, if the public's left, I don't know that it makes much sense for us to...
Yeah. I mean, they said for them to wait, but they didn't, but, so, didn't know whether you were coming or not. Unless, unless you yell outside and they're outside, but I don't think so.
I think they're not here.
Yeah.
I believe they're coming back in.
Are they here?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, okay. If they're here, good.
Where? I don't see them. That's probably one of the first times I was glad the public was here.
I don't see them. I don't, are you here for Forty Buckout?
Yeah, I think some people are outside. I just told them to come in before they missed it.
Yeah.
I apologize to the Chair, members of the Board, it's not like us to...
No. Oh, okay, they stayed.
My name's Mark McMahon. My name is Lauren McMahon. I'm with Lang and Engineering. We're here today for a public hearing for an amended plat at Forty Buckout. There were three minor changes to the plat. Would you like me to reiterate those ones from the last meeting? Yes. So the first change is a sewer easement over Lot One. In construction, we could not connect the sewer in Buckout Road, so we had to go through Lot One to an easement adjacent to it. So there's a fifteen-foot sewer easement. That's been filed with the Westchester County Clerk. The next is a one-to-one land swap between Lot Six over here and the adjacent parcel. And the other is a twelve-foot lot line shift between Lots Five and Six, which maintain compliance still with Lots Five and Six. So this is just about getting the amended plat filed.
Okay. Motion to open the public hearing?
I'll move. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody on the board have any comments or questions on this? So Chuck, or I'm sorry, your name was?
Lauren.
Lauren, are there any outstanding building department violations that still need to be cleared up before we can take action that you're aware of?
So Lot One, should I speak on?
So there are outstanding violations that are being dealt with by our client. None of them relate to this plat amendment. He's got various violations that he's got to resolve. He's in the middle of doing that. He's got a court appearance, I believe, in July. But again, none of those relate to these three plat adjustments.
Well, other than the fact that it's the same applicant.
Yes.
And we typically don't approve things that have outstanding violations on them, but I hear you. Okay, I got you.
That's the status.
Thanks. So is there anybody here from the public that would like to speak on this application? Come on up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Board, my name is Alex Baropoulos. I'm at Ninety-four Stonewall Circle, which is right behind the Buckout Development. My biggest concern is that of a walkway that attaches Stonewall Circle to Buckout Road. I believe it was a wetland. I believe also there's, there were sewer lines as well as a drainage system, and my biggest worry now, whether there was inadvertent destruction of those lines, because there used to be flowing water, and now there's absolutely no flowing water. It's a stagnant pond. It's mosquito-filled. There's been also some damage with heavy construction machinery that was done to that walkway. So this is my biggest concern, of course. It abuts my property, and I'm trying to now have the task of talking to the town engineer to see if there's any aspects of that that I'm not aware of, right? I'm just a physician. That's all I do. I don't understand.
Different kind of plumbing.
So that's my biggest concern, sir.
Are these the pictures that we got from the owner management?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So the town engineer is aware. We did not get any comments from him for this meeting, but he is aware of those, so... Okay, I got it. Thanks. Anyone else? Okay, Mr. Cleary, what do you think?
Typically, as you indicated, Mr. Chairman, we would not take action while there are outstanding violations. And I think the issue you just heard, I'm not sure that Mike has all of those issues, or was aware of all those issues. So I think you need to hear from the engineer.
So we're going to adjourn the public hearing? Okay. Comments, questions?
There's one other outstanding issue that we were here tonight for, which is a wetland permit. As part of this subdivision application, we filed for a wetland permit, and we, the board voted yes on that, and the permit was never filed in the paperwork side of things. So we spoke with Pat on that issue, and we were hoping to get that paperwork side of things resolved through this meeting tonight.
Okay. That's not part of my...
So we would do it all together when we grant the amendment to the subdivision of wetland permit as well?
That's not in our packet for tonight's meeting, so we'll do it all at once. Once we get the engineering comments and the, your client clears up whatever violations they have. So motion to adjourn, please, till July 26th?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number seven or number eight, Westchester Joint Water Works.
Check to see if I have control over this.
Hi, good evening. My name is Eileen Feldman. I'm with Hazen and Sawyer. I'm the engineer for Westchester Joint Water Works, and tonight I'll be presenting on the Ry Lake Water Filtration Plant on behalf of the Westchester Joint Water Works.
So I have a question before you start. Is the DEIS complete?
The DEIS has been submitted, and the comment period has been closed. We're currently under responding to comments.
Okay.
So then there will be an FEIS and findings after that.
So...
So the environmental review process is not...
No, okay. So I asked you the wrong question. So we can't take any action on this until the environmental review is done. So why would you request it be on the agenda tonight?
We submitted our application back in April. We wanted to give you a chance to have an overview of the project, given that it's a large application and a large project.
Okay. But it's going to be, when do you anticipate having the FEIS and the environmental review?
In the fall.
I would suggest that it's probably better when it's all done to make your presentation and come back. I mean, we're going to look at it now, and then we're going to see it in September again or October? I mean, I don't know that that helps you, to be honest with you. I mean...
We did want to make sure that we were forthcoming with all of the materials. We have administrative orders that this is required by the EPA and...
No, I got all of that, but we can't do anything. So, you know, it's just really, doesn't make sense to me to have it done now. I mean, guidance, Mr. Cleary?
So they can certainly make a presentation. The issue is, if the environmental review causes changes to the plan, then the plan would change. So take this as a very preliminary presentation, and I think there's background information that will...
Okay.
...is useful for you.
Okay.
But you certainly can't take any action.
Okay.
It's a brief presentation, and we'll keep it brief, but we want to give you some background on it since it is a large project.
Sure.
So a little bit of background on the project itself. The Westchester Joint Water Works gets their water from the Ry Lake source, which is part of the Kensico Reservoir, part of New York City's Kensico Reservoir. There's a pump station right on the edge of the Kensico Reservoir, the Ry Lake Pump Station. It pumps water south along Purchase Street into the distribution system for Harrison and Mamaroneck. As I mentioned, it's a public health concern. We need to build this filtration plant to meet the New York State Sanitary Code and meet U.S. EPA, the safe, the surface water drinking, surface water drinking rule. So the purpose of this plant is to filter the water. Right now, we've located it at a spot that is right along existing infrastructure, transmission main that runs along Purchase Street. It's a portion of the current Westchester County Airport, and it would be coming in right off of the transmission main from that pump station. The treatment process that we are using is something that's used throughout the Northeast. It's called dissolved air flotation over filtration, very commonly used and well-proven technology. It is a thirty-million-gallon-per-day filtration plant. And the site itself, the building itself, is approximately one acre. Some of the major components of the site are the filtration plant itself, two emergency generators to the south, extensive stormwater controls through a constructed wetland, bio-retention, and stormwater detention chambers. The site itself would be accessed off of Purchase Street, and we've done extensive work to maintain the one-hundred-foot buffer along Purchase Street as well as the existing stone wall. A little bit more on the site overview. This site is located in a special business district, and Westchester Joint Water Works is applying for a special exception use permit as part of all Westchester Joint Water Works properties. They can be, can be granted use in a special exception use case. The site itself is thirteen point four acres with a finished impervious area of two point four acres. The building is about point eight five acres, eight six acres, with a total lot coverage of six and a half percent. Our median building height is thirty feet, and that was important that we maintained that because it is in proximity to other residential districts. So it's maintaining that height requirement of those residential districts, though it's in a special business zone. And the front side and rear yards are all one hundred feet. Getting into some of the site components to give you a feel for what's on the screen over here, we have our main filtration building in the middle, and then we have an access road that was been, we've been working closely with the fire department in Harrison to make sure that it's meeting all of the access requirements to get emergency vehicles around the building, as well as any deliveries that are needed. There's an emergency generators on the left side of your building, and then we have, as we go around the building, wastewater tanks to the rear. That's on the airport side. And then we further come around, there's a propane tank that's the fuel source for heating purposes. I mentioned earlier a multi-stage stormwater detention system. Since we are discharging to the Kensico Reservoir, we do need to make sure that we meet all of New York State DEC and New York City DEP regulations. We're working very closely with them to make sure we're meeting all of their regulations very carefully. There we have constructed wetlands, bio-retention, and stormwater detention chambers. We have a protected chemical delivery area. The chemicals that will be used at this facility are the same chemicals that are already being used in the area at the Ry Lake Pump Station and the Purchase Street Pump Station. They'll be centralized to this location, and there'll be special containment built to make sure that nothing can be released to the environment. And then, as you can see in the brighter green, that is all new landscaping that we'll be adding to increase buffering and screening to the nearby properties. Very important as part of our design considerations is to make sure that we blend in with the neighborhood and screen as much as we can to protect the visual character of the neighborhood. We've got various renderings along the side here with a focus on making it have muted colors, includes stone to match the stone entranceway and the stone wall along Purchase Street. We have faceting and gabled roof styles, again, to try to make this blend in with the neighborhood, and then an extensive buffering of landscaping and trees to infill and maintain that visual block. Regarding landscaping and lighting, this whole site is primarily Norway maple. By the nature of the name, Norway maple, these are invasive species, not native to this area. We'll be replacing those trees that need to be removed with three hundred native trees and extensive ecosystem restoration with the wetlands, the bio-retention, and several other landscaping methods. Our lighting will be very focused on keeping it as limited as possible to maintain just the security and site safety for the operators. So it'll be downward lighting, motion sensing lighting, and things to really minimize lighting at the site. Some other conservation methods that we've included in this project are solar arrays along the roof of the building, the natural lighting, constructed wetlands, vegetated access wherever possible rather than any porous, impervious area, and planting those native species. Regarding wetlands, there is a strip of wetlands along the backside of the property. These were delineated in 2021. We will have some temporary disturbance of one point seven acres of wetlands and point four acres of permanent disturbance. Most of that permanent disturbance will be replaced with that constructed wetland area, and there'll be no floodplain impacts. For traffic impacts, once the building is constructed, there'll be no permanent traffic impacts. It'll be very comparable to what is there already, minimal operators, the same chemical deliveries that are going on in the area already. During the three-year construction period, there will be approximately twenty trucks per day with a small peak for about three months at a high peak of construction. That's that overview of the project and some of the details of the construction. I'm going to just turn it over to John Ellsworth to give a brief overview of our permit application.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Members of the board, very brief. The, and I'm sure this, the board is aware of most of this. The approvals that are needed from the town, from this board, site plan approval and presentation that Eileen gave, an overview, the submission will have all of the details. Special exception permit, and as part of the application, an analysis was presented of compliance with Section 235-16 of the Town Village Code and also of Section 235-17M of the code. In addition to wetlands permit, and just a point of clarification, the disturbance that was discussed earlier is of the wetland buffer. There will be no disturbance within the actual wetland boundary. And as Eileen mentioned, that will be, there will be mitigation in the terms of, in terms of wetland creation and biofiltration system and underdrain system. In addition, subdivision application has been submitted to this board to create the thirteen point four acre parcel that will be apportioned off from the airport property. And finally, there are two zoning variances that are needed for this. They're relatively minor. It's for height of the perimeter fence around the facility. Originally, and I think in the paperwork that was already submitted, it was proposed to be a ten-foot chain-link fence, and that was at the direction of the New York State Health Department for security purposes. In discussions with the Health Department, they have agreed to go with an eight-foot climb-proof fence. They're basically vertical poles, and eight feet up is the crossbar, and there are, it extends above the crossbar with, it's a wrought iron fence. And then the second variance is for the location of the gate, which is also for security purposes, and that is within the hundred-foot buffer from Purchase Street. And then, of course, there's architectural board of review, review of the application, and then finally, a building permit. And that's all I have. If you have any questions about it, certainly, we're here to answer them.
Chuck, can you just describe how the thirteen acres is being created? The land swap?
Okay. The parcel that the project is proposed on is part of the airport property. I think the board's aware that Westchester Joint Water Works owns an equal-sized parcel to the south of that that was proposed for development with this facility back fifteen years ago. And the seeker process for that stalled, kind of stalled at the FEIS stage. So Westchester Joint Water Works decided to regroup and decide if there were other places they can build this facility or other options to meet the court orders that they have against them. So there have been discussions with the county, and there is an agreement for the swap where the county would obtain the parcel that Westchester Joint Water Works currently owns to the south and exchange it for the Water Works to obtain title to and build the facility on the parcel by the airport property now. Is that what you were looking for, Pat?
Thanks. Good? You guys okay?
Yeah.
Thank you for your time. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Aller?
Just of reading the principal site design consultants, and we're representing the Aller family, the Tullop subdivision. The last time we were before you, we had a public hearing which was closed. At that time, we were told we could move towards preparation of a final plat, subdivision plat, which we have done. We've also submitted with the plat full engineered drawings, stormwater pollution prevention plan, and all the necessary details to support... plan, and all the necessary details to support that, the plan.
So you have some comments from the, from the tenant here?
We got today? We do not.
I wanted to question, was after six?
Oh, was after six? Yeah, no, then I did not. She, she's, she's trying to get here from another meeting, but she's not going to.
Can I get it to you now? I'm sorry.
Yes, that's okay.
So, Pat, could we do a conditional on this?
So they're extensive comments?
Extensive, so we should, no, okay. So obviously, before we can move on this.
Excuse me?
Before we can move on this, you know, the engineering department has to sign off on it for us, so.
Okay.
So this is not a public hearing, right?
Comments are fairly extensive. Some of these things that you may have addressed already candidly, but some are, it appears to be new comments that you'll have to address.
Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you.
See you next month, sorry.
I guess. Okay.
Number nine, number ten, number eleven, I guess. One thirty-one Adelphi.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name's Steve Demofsky. I'm with Demofsky Architecture. I'm here with Dan Collins from Hudson Engineering. And basically, we're working on a subdivision project of a hundred by a hundred parcel at one thirty-one Adelphi Avenue. And we've, we've shown drawings that depict the two proposed fifty by a hundred lots. We're going to be building two, two, two-family houses on the, a two, a two-family house on each property and roughly about three thousand square foot each. The proposed application meets all the zoning and code requirements. We're not going to be asking any variances tonight. And we have curb cuts shown on the driveway that meet the town regulations. So I'm going to ask Dan to come up for, just to give a brief overview on the stormwater management part of the project.
Yes. Yeah. He phoned in to me, too. Yep.
Good evening, members of the board. Dan Collins, Hudson Engineering. With regard to the stormwater utilities, that's pretty straightforward. On the front yards of each of the properties, the front driveways, we're capturing the runoff from each driveway and being, capturing and conveying it to an individual infiltration system on each of the front yards of the property. The remaining roof area is going to be captured and conveyed to the rear yard, and there'll be an additional infiltration system in the rear yard of each property. Both are size for, size for the three inches over the impervious area per the town requirements. Regardless to utility connections, there's existing sewer and water within Adelphi Avenue. We will be bringing both services up onto the house from, for both sides of each residence. Other than that, it's relatively straightforward.
So we need a motion to declare lead agency for secret purposes?
I'll move.
Second? I'll second. All's in favor?
Aye.
Okay. You have comments from the tenant engineer that you need to do, and we'll see you next month.
Thank you.
Thank you. Eighty-one Crystal Street.
Good evening, board members of Almiron from Community Designs and Engineering. On behalf of the owner, Tina Martinez, we are proposing a very straightforward two-lot subdivision. So the applicant or owner lived in the current residence since the storm Ida. She hasn't been there. The entire house, the first floor elevation flooded with sewer and stormwater. So the existing residence is only about, about two to three feet above the grade around the property. It's a very level property. So in doing so, the house would have to be either, you know, reconstructed to mitigate, you know, future storm events, or in this case, taking advantage of the hundred by hundred lot, the owner would like to subdivide the property, creating two parcels where the new residents will have to abide by all of the special floodplain requirements as well as being within the hundred-year floodplain. So basically, right now, the existing residence takes up a large part, it's pretty much dotted here, so it takes up a good amount of the footprint and versus the proposed dwellings that will be constructed as far as the two-lots subdivision will take on, you know, the required zoning limitations. So they'll be within all required zoning requirements. No, you know, zoning variance will be asked for with, in the proposed project. And obviously, the stormwater mitigation will be captured on site with no runoff. Right now, there is no known stormwater facilities that exist on this site. Very preliminary view, but that's pretty much it in a nutshell. The proposed residence will be, again, you know, very similar to what you see in the neighborhood where nothing is really at the garage level, and then you have your first floor and second floor typical habitable spaces. And then, yeah, we did just receive comments from Mr. Amadeo, the tenant engineer, and we could obviously work closely with him to remedy those issues that he has.
Okay. So, so the motion to designate lead agency? I'll move second.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. See you next month.
Thank you.
Not tonight, Rob.
I mean, what he said, it's totally.
Not, not tonight, Rob. July twenty-sixth.
The governor sent out that tonight was a public.
It's a public meeting tonight.
Planning board meeting.
It was a planning board meeting.
How many people are here, eighty-one Crystal?
And you'll have the opportunity to speak at the public hearing on the twenty-sixth of July.
Well, I just want you to know that that house is covered, sir, not.
Good.
All right, thank you. Thanks to everybody.
Thanks.
Why is the sign here? I'm going to.
The Harrison Grand.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Hang on a second. No, it's not you. Give him a second to get out of here. Okay. Okay, I think we can hear you now. Hang on a second.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is William Knoll. I'm a partner at the firm of Cuddy and Fader, and I'm here tonight on behalf of Elk Homes LLC. Gary Hirsch, the principal, is, is here with me, as are consultants from Crozier Gedney Architects, Rex Gedney, and behind me, and Nils Fredrickson, and from Kinley Horn, John Canning, and Bonnie Van Olson. These, these, I'm sorry, and, and from Bibbo Associates, Ned Gabori is here as well. So these premises are on the north side of Halsted Avenue, four oh two Halsted Avenue, and comprise approximately half an acre as delineated here. The existing use is a JP Morgan Chase, Chase Bank. JP Morgan Chase is the owner of the property. So there's an existing access from Macy Street, and two driveways on Halsted Avenue, parking throughout the back. And as you know from the submission, there's an easement for ingress and egress. It's twenty-five feet wide and across the western side of the property. What's proposed to be developed in the, in this property, which is in the MF district, is a twenty-eight unit, five-story multifamily building with approximately forty parking spaces to be known as the Harrison Grand. The units here, in what is a highly amenitized, high-end development, are proposed to be a mix of units, seven one-bedroom, thirteen two-bedroom, and eight three-bedroom units. Most apartments will have their own balconies. There'll be two penthouse units with private rooftop patios. The unit sizes are, are large for the area. Two-bedroom units will be sixteen hundred square feet, and the average three-bedroom will be nineteen, one thousand nine hundred and fifty square feet. Typical one-bedroom apartments have more than a thousand square feet plus a dent. As I mentioned, they're highly amenitized. Most units will be appointed with a powder room as well as a large residential kitchen, high-quality appliances and finishes. Many of them will have their own balconies and wood floors, et cetera. One of the key components of the building is the tenant amenity space. And there's nearly, there's thirty-seven hundred square feet of interior amenity space in the building, so the equivalent of two larger apartments that's, that are made of L.B., as just the amenity space, four, almost two thousand square feet on the first floor would be, would include a fitness center, bike storage and pet spa, and a little, a little under six hundred square feet of outdoor amenity space. On the rooftop, there's twenty-six hundred plus square feet of indoor amenity space, including a tenant amenity kitchen, dining room, work-study and conference room space as well as storage and bathrooms. And then in addition, there's four thousand seven hundred and sixty square feet of outdoor terraced area. So the, the terraced area is highly landscaped and amenitized and, and quite attractive. As I've mentioned, there are forty parking spaces. The ordinance requires one and a quarter space per unit, and I think there's a ten-space credit in this area. So as my, as I calculated, I think there's something like twenty-five parking spaces required, and we've got forty that we're, that we're showing. As I've mentioned, access to the premises is currently from multiple driveways, and we're proposing that we would be a, under here. We're proposing to essentially close this as a through driveway and to have a, a loop driveway for FedEx and that sort of delivery. And then the, the main access would be in from Macy Street to the parking area here. This component of the building that was referenced in Pat Cleary's memo is a stair tower. The, the building footprint is, as I'm describing it here, so there's a, like, sort of a pedestal, essentially, but the building overhangs these parking spaces here. So this is actually, goes up to a full floor above, and that's the fire exit stair at the back. So the building will be set back twenty feet from Halsted as required. And then on, on the back property, while we have this twenty-five-foot easement as a setback to the, to the property to the west, the building at this corner would actually be up against the property line. So there are multiple variances that we're asking for in connection with, with the, with the building itself. We think that the building is wholly compatible with the size, scale, and massing of other buildings in the area. And in that context, the premises comprise twenty-eight thousand plus square feet. If you count the easement area, it's a fifty percent coverage. If you don't count it, it's about sixty-three plus percent. And we have both of those numbers shown on the plans. Right now, there's virtually no underground stormwater facilities. There'll be a green roof and stormwater improvements that are, that are put in, and it'll yield an eighty percent reduction over existing conditions in the area. I think what I'm going to do is to ask Rex to walk through the building elevations and to describe to you the building, if I may, at this point.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Rex Gedney, Crozier Gedney Architects. Also with me is Nils Fredrickson from my office as well. We've submitted to you landscape plans for both the site as well as the rooftop amenities. That was included in our packet. We did have a digital presentation, and I think you have them here, which shows all the plantings in color, but we have them all keyed on the plan. As Bill was referencing, referencing to, the main entrance is back through Macy. There's forty parking spaces here. We do show several of them tandem. There's nine tandem spaces. However, if you take away the forty minus the nine tandem, we still exceed the, the requirement of twenty-five spaces. This is our site plan, which, the importance here, you've seen what is going on in the site. We do have charging stations provided. This is a building section, and we are compliant to the main roof with our maximum height of forty-five feet, so that, that is shown here. It is the rooftop amenity, which Bill had mentioned that we will need a variance for. This plan shows in color just the amenity spaces. As you can see, the first floor is primarily composed of amenity spaces. There are two apartment units on the first floor as well, as well as mechanical spaces. There's a fitness area, storage facility, bike storage, pet wash, mailroom, things of These are our typical floor plans. And then this is the, the top floor elevator, which shows the two private, considering penthouse units, and the balance is the amenity space. The yellow is the indoor area, which has dining room, conference area, work areas, and a kitchen, as well as additional storage facilities and a fairly outdoor, large outdoor and well-landscaped terrace there as well. We did a comparison of our floor plans compared to some of the other current buildings that, multifamily buildings that have come on the market. And as you can see, the square footages versus the one-bedroom versus what are some of the other apartments on it. So they are certainly generous apartment sizes. And we did this analysis for all three, one, two, and three bedrooms. And in each case, our proposed apartment layouts are significantly, substantially greater than really what's on the market now. These are typical finishes that Elk Home does in their units. They're all very high-end materials and such. The building elevation, we have multiple renderings. The building elevation, we have multiple renderings of how it's viewed. There's going to be a combination exterior of pre-cast and concrete reinforced cast products for the upper levels. The lower level will be pre-cast material. We're using limestone panels. There'll be stucco as well. So it's a series of undulations on the front elevation. The upper floor, which is the penthouse that you see on the left, are set back. They're not full face on the exterior of the building. They're pushed back, which allows them to have their own private balcony, but again, helps to diminish the overall size and scale of the building. And that's the overview there. So we have views from each side.
Happy to address any questions.
Because I don't see the comparison in our packet that you...
No, the comparison we did not include, and we're happy to submit that to you.
Yeah. Please. So just a couple of things. We'll declare lead agency tonight, but I think we need to do a little bit more than just a short form EAF.
We can do the full EAF, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Okay. And this is the question that we ask everybody now, is like, you know, these are all nice. They're all over the place. These are rental, I assume, not for homeownership? These are rental units?
These are rental units, yes. And with due respect, they're very different than what's all over the place.
No, I get it, but there's still a lot of them that are available in Harrison. So if you didn't do a market analysis, you know, we'd like to see one of where the folks that are going to come from that would rent these.
By your honor.
My name is Gary Hirsch, and I'm the principal owner of Elk Homes. It's a family business located just in Rye up on Theodore Famed Avenue. Known Mr. Cleary for many years. So we are a differentiated developer in Lower Westchester. We have these kind of very large apartments in Rye, Pelham, Mamaroneck, Larchmont, under development in Bronxville, Irvington. And what we offer are apartments that are much larger and much higher finishes than is typical. We're happy to do a market study, if that's what you would like. But I will tell you that most of the market studies are generated by people who are used to seeing 1,100-square-foot, two-bedroom apartments. So we are differentiated. We're comfortable. And our goal is to bring to the marketplace mostly where downsizing families who are in the community don't have... When they sell their home and want to stay in Harrison, don't have a place to move to that's as spacious and as comfortable as where they want to live. So we're happy to provide that.
Listen, I get it, but this is like the seventh one that's... No, I understand that you are talking about maybe a different product here.
Yes.
But it's essentially rental apartments in Harrison. So it becomes like, where's everybody coming from? And, you know, what happens if they don't? So that would be helpful.
Okay.
I have one question, if I might.
Of course.
I'm not asking you to project your rents, because that's just not fair. But when you say that, you know, you've done comparable developments in the area, Rye or Irvington and so forth, what are the current rents in those units for, you know, one or two?
So I'll answer the question this way, okay? The typical rent in the Avalon is $4 a square foot.
Okay.
So if you have an 1,100-square-foot apartment, it's $4,400 a month. And I don't want to be speaking for them, and the numbers are not different importantly from with Playhouse loss, for example. They're a little bit less at the Caraway because of their remoteness. Our goal is to charge the same or comparable rent per square foot, okay? But for a larger apartment, we would charge more money.
Per square foot?
No, the same price per square foot.
Okay. But you get more square foot.
Had a 2,000-square-foot apartment, that was $4 a square foot. It would be $8,000.
Is there a market? I'm just curious, for $8,000 a month?
We're renting apartments... We rent apartments all the time in Maroneck, Larchmont, Pelham for $8,000 and more. And frankly, we're the only ones who develop those kinds of apartments. And that's why we're comfortable that it, you know... You have in Harrison a wonderful, comfortable people who want to stay in Harrison, but they want to sell their homes. And they don't want to move into an 1,100-square-foot apartment. And their biggest complaint is that it's too small. So this is the market that we serve, and are very comfortable and experienced servicing.
There's no age restrictions? That's not...
No, because we have a mix of young families moving up from the city. We just rented an apartment in Pelham to a couple. He works for Golden Sachs. She's a surgeon, and they don't have kids. You talk about student impact on schools. We have... We've done this now with six or eight or 10 buildings. We have virtually no students, no school-age children who go to public school. The data is in the report that we've given you. So we have a lot of experience with this market and understand the product that we're offering.
Where's the apartment in Rye?
In Rye, we have a 10-school street. It's right behind the big parking lot.
Exactly what I'm talking about.
It's the first building we developed. It's 15 years old. Unfortunately, it's only six units. But it's very, very desired.
And the Maroneck one?
So we have two buildings in Maroneck. We have one opposite the Maroneck diner at 422 East Boston Polish Road, which we're very proud of and think it's a beautiful building. And then Rex designed... Where is Rex? Rex designed a beautiful building for us on Maroneck Avenue. The entrance is actually on Library Lane, but it's 108 Maroneck Avenue. And, you know, that was our first foray in extra-large apartments, and it's been very well-received.
Thanks.
So I don't know if you were here earlier for the discussion of the one on the other end, the Folstead Avenue.
So if I might, if I might, we actually listened to what you had to say.
Okay.
And I have a suggestion, okay? We would be willing to add an affordable apartment if we could add one more unit to the roof as a way of compensating ourselves for the lost revenue.
We'd have to look at it.
Yeah. Would you like us to come back with...
So there's a couple of things that I think we'd like you to come back...
Sure.
Or at least I'd like to come back with is, what does a fully conforming building look like?
We have...
Without... No, you don't. Without variances.
We have...
Oh, is it... I didn't see it.
We were giving a heads up. We did not submit it.
Oh.
If we could, we could show you.
Sure.
I mean, we're going to go through this, you know, with the secret review.
No, no, sure.
But sure.
So if I could, I'd just like to introduce part of a component here is that part of the reason that the rents are able to be achieved with the square footage is the high level of amenity space and community space available. And that's part of what makes for the larger massing of the building and, of course, that amenity space, you're not getting the $4 a square foot back for. But the... This is... Rex, do you want to...
Sure. So this... We looked at a couple of different options, whether we included the easement or not. As far as coverage is concerned, Pat's memo indicated it's 69% or 63% not including the easement, but when you do, it's 50%.
So wait a minute. This is the site option with the easement, but not in that way, not conforming, to your point, Mr. Chairman. So we have another plan that shows what would it be. And, you know, essentially, because the easement area is...
So, Mr. Knoll, when I'm looking down, I'm looking... I see parking spaces, but that's actually apartment building above that, right?
So, yeah. So it's a little difficult to get, but if you look here, this is the first floor with that piece that's the stair tower.
Got it.
This is actually the footprint of the building itself.
Got it.
So if you can envision that footprint extended, instead of it stopping here, we've achieved covered parking by putting it under the building.
Got it.
So this is the site option that's with the easement. That's back to the one that I was talking about before. Sorry.
But this shows that building section shows... We have bulkheads for both the elevator and the stair towers, but this takes off the rooftop amenity space.
And to that point, when we were initially reviewing, if we had just rooftop amenity space, we would need a variance in any event for a lobby for the elevator to be weather-protected if you were going up to the rooftop and having the lobby area. So the height would be... Would need a variance anyway, just for rooftop up there. And that's the additional amenity space, of course, adds more square footage that requires the variance as well. So this is...
Without the easement and without any rooftop occupancy. So this is a conforming plan with the...
So this is the 50%.
Correct. And at this point, it's about a little over 11,000 square feet per floor compared to...
Compared to 13,400 per floor. So we...
And Bill, same number of units.
Without the easement and then...
Same number of units.
We did not calculate units. We did not do a floor plan layout. We're just doing this for massing. And what happens with any of this, of course, is if we lose 3,000 square feet per floor, you'd need to have smaller units, and that's not the product that Elk produces. So the smaller units without the amenity space is just a totally different program than my client seeks to build.
So to be clear, if the units were smaller, they would still meet the minimum size of a dwelling unit?
Yes.
Theoretically, they could be smaller.
You could have the same number of units. As you know, the zoning ordinance doesn't have so many feet per square foot for the lot area. You've got the massing and the coverage requirement.
There is a minimum for the unit size.
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry.
600 square feet or 600...
Yeah, we would meet that. So we theoretically could have the same number of units. It's just not the product that we're looking at.
You gave the numbers. One was 11,000 square foot per floor.
Yeah, this is 11,080.
What's the proposed?
I'm sorry?
The proposed is 13?
13,000.
Or the conforming with the easement is 13,000?
Same. 13,400 is what's proposed.
Got it.
And, you know, the... What we've been... The way we presented it is, you know, coverage is a question of the massing in comparison to the land that you control. And if you count the easement as land that we control, then we conform. But of course, that's up to the building inspector to determine, and we're presenting it both ways.
So under here is dramatic section. We've had that discussion internally, and that property is owned by Newport Towers. It really would not, other than the easement. It's not part of this site.
We understand that. So we have a variance application that we anticipate needing to file and have submitted for review by the building department. So this shows...
This is the proposed, as we have submitted today.
Sorry, go ahead.
Yeah. This is the proposed. This is the proposed without the rooftop amenity space.
Mm-hmm.
So we would still have the bulkheads. So this is what the difference is between the two.
And where... I can't see the top of it, Rex.
Oh, sorry.
So another way to present that is...
This is...
Conforming as to height, but not conforming as to cover, the mass.
Got you.
So...
Are there apartments up there, too?
No, not on the middle one.
No, on the proposed.
In the proposed, we have two penthouse units on the top, as well as the amenity space on the top.
And the second one you do not, on the bottom, in the middle one?
Correct.
The middle two you do not. Right. And I don't think, Jeff, we can see the bottom one.
Yeah.
So the bottom one, the building has been reduced in size to meet the conformance that Bill was just talking about and does not have any rooftop amenity space or units.
Right. The bulkheads, as you know, are exempt from the height requirements. You could have that massing at that level, so it would appear in a way to be a store, even though it's not occupied space, so it doesn't count as a store. So I know that was something that we were told you'd ask for. We can submit this for you to have in the record, but we wanted to have it here in time for you to have this discussion.
Great. I mean, you know, if it's not too much of a hassle, would be helpful as a perspective of that, as opposed to just the... Something that looks not... Maybe not that detailed, but...
A rendering.
I'm sorry. A massing, yeah.
We hesitate to do the architecture and how it look like it's a real building design because we really don't have...
Yeah, because you don't want us to like it, and then we...
In addition, we don't have... Like, you need to design it from the inside out.
No, no, I got it. I got it.
So... To go back to Mr. Gelform's comment, or maybe it was the chair's, to build the smaller building would mandate us building more of what you already have.
Have, right.
In a very simple sense. And the height of the building simply doesn't change very much between conforming and non-conforming.
Right.
So we think what we've asked for is consistent with what we hope the board thinks is appropriate for the community.
And by comparison, as you may know, Newport Towers...
Yeah, it's much bigger.
Is 63 feet high immediately next door, and it's six stories plus the lower levels.
Here's one I'd be curious to compare. I apologize, I don't even know if it's rentals or condos, but the Ritz. How does your, you know, your product compare, at least on the interior of things?
Well, I love that question. We think that we do condo finishes.
Okay.
We think we do... So for example, we do five-inch-wide white oak flooring. He calls it wood flooring. Well, okay, he's not paying for it. We use Merely appliances, or Sub-Zero, or Viking, as opposed to Whirlpool or GE that you would see in almost all of the other buildings around. We have custom cabinetry that we put in. We put in marble countertops and backsplashes. This is much closer to the St. Regis, which is, of course, a condo, and much different than what the typical product is in the... I'll call them the national developer buildings, the Avalons, the Toll Brothers, the NFRs.
What I was going to ask you is, you know, obviously, you've seen the buildings, but it might be helpful for the board, or at least for me, if we could take a look. We drive by and look at the outside.
Oh, sure. Be happy to. In fact, I'll make you two offers. I'll take you into... Fortunately, all of our apartments are rented right now. So we'd have to make an appointment to come in and take a look at them. But I'll take you into both examples of furnished buildings in Maroneck, if that's okay, because that's closest. And then we can also do a building under construction in Larchmont, where building apartments as large as 2,500 square feet.
Sure. Sure. If you just would coordinate with Roche, try and find a date.
If you give us a couple of dates, and then I can organize it with the tenants, I'd be happy to show it, okay?
Great. Can I just make one comment, which probably, I don't know, it's under the purview of this board, because we're not the Architectural Review Board, but the interiors, based on the renderings I see, look great. If you could just look at the exterior, the one in Maroneck, I really like that building.
Beautiful building.
The monochromatic look of this building, I just think is a little stark. If you could look at some different color variations. I'm just, you know, to try to soften the overall... Just one comment I have.
So I have no imagination, and I don't pretend to, okay? This building is a derivative of, candidly, the most desired and expensive building of its type in London. So that looks plain, and I can tell you, in every building that we've ever built, literally every one, the boards such as yours said, "Well, if I knew it was going to look that good, I would have given you such a hard time." And I would encourage you to look at all the buildings.
If one of us says that, I'll buy you the scotch.
That's a deal.
Well, to Chip's point, it's the entranceway to the town, and, you know, we really...
Oh, absolutely. And we're very proud of this design, okay? And we'll listen to any comments and suggestions that you have. We're not obstinate. We're not difficult. But we know what this will look like in real life, and it's quite beautiful. And these are much more expensive materials than you see in other developments that are around town.
Okay. So we need a motion to declare lead agency here. Chris Seager? I'll move second.
Second.
Folks in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
See you next month. Thank you. Or we'll see you before. Right. We'll send some dates around with Roche. Yeah. Wish everyone a happy holiday.
Thank you. You, too.
As well. Thanks.
Number 14. Page... Pager, am I saying that right? Pager residents?
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Moving through the... We've been pretty good.
Moving through the meeting pretty good.
Yeah.
My name is Jim Harland Pudis from DRV Architects. We're here to ask, we did a direct replacement of an existing fence, cyclone fence, with a wood, black painted fence within the 100-foot buffer. So it was a direct replacement, not knowing that permit, we did receive a violation from town inspector on that, and we are here to comply and ask for lenience on this fence. It's installed already. There was a, there was a six, there was an existing six-foot cyclone fence there, chain room fence, I should call it, and it was not in good shape, and we did something, we did a fence that would blend in with the neighborhood, or with the environment. So driving by it, obviously, it's hard to see, doesn't stand out, and it's a natural wood material.
It's hard to see it, which is a good thing. Yeah, you gotta rotate it. See it? Back here. Let's go this way.
Let's go horizontal.
It's back there. Yeah, behind, yeah.
Okay.
We don't need a public hearing for this one. Okay. Any other comment? And this, to me, looks fine.
Yeah. And the other one? I wonder if the public, if you do have people here?
Oh, are there people here that wish to speak on this? Or anybody has a comment on it? No? Okay. Okay. So let's, we need an approval of the 100-foot purchase buffer. This is a replacement of an existing fence.
We have no technical comments, no engineering comments.
Okay. So motion to approve?
I'll move.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jerry Lawton. I'm an attorney, but I'm also a neighbor of the Three Purchase Lane property. We arrived, our group just arrived, after the call of the matter. Have, has that been heard at this point, and may we be heard?
Yes, it has been, but you can be. Yes, you can be. Yeah, no, it has been.
Can you tell me if there was any presentation made by the Three Purchase Lane group?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Was there any action taken by the board with regard to it?
Yes. We scheduled a public hearing for...
Next month.
July 26th.
July 26th.
So it was set over to the July, for the July hearing?
So there's, there were some comments from the town engineer, and then, I don't know if it was you or if it was your neighbors, but had some, an engineer provide comments on the stormwater plan?
Yes, we did.
So we asked them to address those comments and to address the town engineer's comments, and then would come back with the plan with those for public comment in July, July 26th.
I see. So essentially, it's all of the comments adverse to the proposal that were made by the Purchase Lane group, so to speak?
Yeah, they will address those, and then they'll address the town engineer's comments and whatever he required to put on the plan. They also submitted, and it's probably online, if it's not, it will be shortly, what we asked them to do last month, which was to look at a two-lot subdivision, what would be allowed under current zoning, the size and massing of the houses, and then what they could put on a three-lot subdivision, what would be maximum allowed under the current zone to do that, and then versus what they are actually proposing.
Thank you for that, and that is, will be a matter of record that will be in the minutes?
Yeah.
Great.
Yeah. And you'll probably be able to get the tape.
It appears that anything that I might say here, we've already said in the form of letters that have been submitted and in the report that was issued by Ms. Montserrat. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Yeah, that was part of the record.
I just wanted to make sure we didn't miss anything.
No. And the public hearing is actually next month, so...
I appreciate it.
No problem. Thank you. You guys to say?
Yeah, thank you.
No problem. Free purchase. Purchase. Forty Buckett, we held over because of the same reason. And also, they have, what do you call it?
Yeah, we're done. Yeah. Free purchase was very contentious.
Violations. So, Mr. Gelfarb, I want to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, motion to adjourn, Mr. Chair.
Second.
I was beckoning.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.